All to order the Lewiston City Council for the regular meeting, June 12, 2023. Next order of business is our pledge of allegiance. Helen Mofeth is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you please rise and join us in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Helen. Our next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Also, Lewiston City Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of the city of Lewiston. With that, I will open up for citizen comments. If you have comments, please come up to the microphone and speak clearly and loudly into the microphone so those listening at home can hear what you have to say. Give us your name and your city of residence only. You'll have three minutes. Are there any citizen comments?
Hi, my name is Anne Watkins. My city of residence is of Clarkston, Washington. I am a member of the Valley Vision Executive Committee, and I'm speaking on behalf tonight of the Valley Vision Board of Directors, and we have 11 board members in attendance tonight. We'll be making a presentation a little bit later in the agenda, which will outline Valley Vision's new direction, which has been developed by our board, leveraging the experience and knowledge of our new president and CEO, Jerry Chavez, and has the full support of our Board of Directors. Our proposal will outline what we will accomplish, how we will accomplish it, and includes metrics and deliverables. We appreciate the opportunity to make a presentation tonight, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Anne.
Thanks, Anne.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Ada Eldridge from Lewiston. I just have two things I wanted to talk about tonight. One of them is that whatever's going on tonight with Happy Day Corporation, there's nothing in the packet, the agenda packet, to let the public know what that is. It just skips right over it in the agenda packet. And I know, I mean, I don't know, but I'm sure somebody here knows the legality of that because the public should know what it is that's taking place here. So I don't know if that was an accident or if that was on purpose, but maybe that should be not talked about tonight in this meeting because it's not in the packet. And then the second thing I wanted to talk about was that we're having that water restriction. And I saw the letter in the editor from you, Mayor Johnson, and it's really disappointing to see you presenting yourself as you against the citizens of Lewiston. People in this community, they have questions about why some people, like the president of LCSC, gets to water the president's lawn when other people don't get to. And in the letter to the editor, you said that you wanted to answer that question, but you didn't answer that question. You just talked all around and around and around it about how elderly and disabled get to have a alternate watering schedule. But I don't, I don't think the president of LC is elderly or disabled. So it just doesn't look good. And then the veiled threat about the Tribune using a drone on the public property to see what's going on, that too, I'm really disappointed in that because that really paints it as you against us. I think if you were going to take the time to write a letter to the editor, maybe you could have said, "Citizens, this is your mayor, and we're all in this together. And I understand that people want to water their lawns, and I understand that people have money put into landscaping, and we're doing the best we can hang in there. You know, we're working on it." But instead, you decided to write a letter about how all of us need to stop asking questions and how the Tribune needs to stop publishing that certain people get to water their lawn, rich people. LCSC, that we all know is tied into the money situation in this town. I just think that was really very poor decision on your part. And I know a lot of people are still questioning.
Thank you. Your overtime. Thank you.
Okay. It would be nice if you would, if you would tell the public, maybe you can write another letter to the editor and explain why the president of LC gets to water her lawn instead of the word salad to make it seem like the problem is us. Maybe that would be a good thing to do.
Further citizen comments?
Hello, I'm Susan Daniel. I am a Lewiston resident and owner of the Bargain Hunter Mall, and I'm here mainly about the construction that's going on downtown and how it's affected all of us small businesses. I know that Mark Alexander has talked with the mayor. I'm not quite sure of that conversation only because, sorry if you can't hear me, only because I have not had a chance to talk to him since he discussed this with you as well. This traffic has, construction has really, really affected numerous small businesses, especially on the end right now that it's working. And I know for myself, it has, for the last two months, really hit us hard in the, in the pocketbook. And as a small business, it's already a struggle to keep above water. And when that affects us with our foot traffic and being redirected traffic and not having places to park, I'm just wondering if there's any plan for any compensation for small businesses that have been affected by this. There's definitely, not just myself, there's a couple others I'm sure you've seen on the news as well, have come forward on this issue, and just wondering if there's any, going to be anything that's going to help us small businesses. Because otherwise, there's some of us that are probably going to go out of business because of this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Eldridge, Lewiston resident. I know a while back, Mayor, you took back those ARPA funds or the, you took back those funds from Valley Vision, and those funds are for the people. And I think those funds would do good in helping these small businesses, you know, because that money is supposed to be dispersed to the people. I know it got diverted and wrongfully. I know there's little stipulations, but I think that big $600 and something thousand dollars would really help these businesses, these small businesses, and it's for the people. I think the city council should do the right thing and use that money to help the people. Thanks.
Thank you, Ray.
Hi, my issue is about safety, really. My name's Rocky Mantise, live in the Orchards. A main water line broke right across from my driveway, and Lloyd got really busy and did a good job repairing it. Anyway, they fixed the driveway because they had a ditch going through it from rain. It lasted six hours. It's not Lloyd's fault. What happens is every time it rains, it washes out the end of my driveway. I've gone around and around with the city about this. John Paternity moved yesterday on his motorcycle and almost crashed because of the ditch between the road on Ripon and my driveway. I'm at 1714 Ripon. Our streets are in disrepair terribly. I don't think we need a new park. I didn't even think we needed a courthouse. We ride, I ride my motorcycle down 21st Street, and it's so rough, I almost get in a wreck. Something has to be done. I'm really disappointed in where my taxpayers' money is being spent. That's it.
Thank you.
David Stevens, Lewiston resident.
Welcome. Welcome.
Anyway, we've got a culvert problem on, between 14th and 15th Avenue in the alley. Your culvert's about three feet round, and it needs to be about 12 or 15 feet round because I just finished pumping out 46 and a half, or 64 and a half inches of water out of my basement, ruined all my furniture, ruined everything in my basement. And this happened again in 2015. So this is a reoccurring problem, and it's all these businesses up the hill not being able to divert the water somewhere besides down 14th Avenue or 21st Avenue. So where the creek is, that culvert needs to be a lot bigger.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you. Further citizen comments? Okay, we'll close that out. Thank you, everyone. Whoop, I'm sorry. Clerk Raven Croft has one to read into the record.
Thank you. This comes from, I'm so sorry, Judy Bartz. Firstly, I must say you, Mr. Mayor, or one of, one or more of the councilmen must have a direct link to Mother Nature or to God ordering the thunderstorms we experienced last week. The deluge we had may have demonstrated the necessity for improving our stormwater system in certain geographical areas, but I believe this was a fluke of nature. Does Lewiston usually get such violent storms? Two weeks ago, Mr. Dustin Johnson noted that implementing such a program would require the creation of yet another division in this department, which already has six divisions. I desire to hear details about this new division, how many new employees, where the employees will be housed, the projected salaries, approved budget. Will their job descriptions be available to citizens and exactly how job quality and quantity is to be measured? Again, you want my money, I want to know how it's going to be spent. This brings up another topic of compensation for the mayor and city councilmen. Is there an annual review of quality and quantity of work being done by these elected officials and also for all personnel working for the city of Lewiston? Standards come from somewhere. Where have these quality assurance criteria come from? And is a grading matrix used to ensure some objectivity? Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further citizen comments, we will move on to our presentations. Roman numeral four. First up, item A, so youth council presentation. This is an update by the Youth Council on 2023, school year accomplishments. And who's going to lead us in that charge? Ray, are you going to lead us or are you ready? You're on, you're on deck, Ray.
Good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Thank you for having us this evening. Raymond Padrina, Recreation Supervisor, City of Lewiston Parks and Recreation. With me today, I have our City Youth Leadership Council here to present to you guys about their accomplishments of the 2022-2023 school year. First up, we have Alexa Anderson.
Don't be afraid to belt it out. Everybody wants to hear what you have to say.
Okay. Hi, guys. Thank you for having us tonight. My name's Alexa Anderson, and I am co-president of Lewiston City Youth Leadership Council. Our mission is to help our community's youth expand their knowledge and provide experiences to them through volunteering and other activities. We work to engage the 7th through 12th graders in the Lewiston School District and instill the importance of civic values such as respect, service, and personal responsibility. Students in our program will ascertain skills such as problem-solving, critical thinking, and communication. We develop our goals based on current issues impacting our peers and other community members. This has been an incredible year under our new liaison, Ray Padrina, and we have been able to aid the Parks and Recreation Department through their many events. We have also been able to independently conduct volunteering with several independent organizations, and we did organize our first ever fundraiser, however small it was. We are incredibly proud to present to you this evening and tell you about this year's accomplishments. Our past and future goals will now be presented to you by Kalen Kelly and Tristan Smalley.
Thank you, Alexa.
Hello, I'm Tristan Smalley, a first-year member at the City Youth Leadership Council this year, and our 2022-2023 goals were recruitment, spreading awareness, fundraising, and volunteering. So first, our first goal was recruitment. We hoped to recruit more members for our club and expand our club's size and what it does in expanding our recruitment. Our second goal was to spread awareness. We hope to spread the awareness of what the club does and how it works in order to help people by spreading the awareness. Our third goal was fundraising. We wanted to help fundraise not only for the city of Lewiston but private institutions like the Food Bank and the YWCA in order to get them the funds they need to help assist valuable and undervalued members of our community. And then finally, volunteering. We hope to volunteer again for private institutions like the YWCA and the Food Bank, but also for the city of Lewiston in order to help them access and give people the things they need. Next, our 2023-2024 goals will be talked about by Kalen Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Kalen Kelly, and our 2023-2024 school year goals are to increase the number of middle schoolers and younger members in our group because most of our members are up-and-coming seniors. We also want to search for more volunteer opportunities and continue working with organizations like the Youth Resource Center, the YWCA, and the Food Bank. We also want to hold more fundraisers and increase community involvement, community involvement and awareness. Next up is Avery Alfred, talking about our events through Parks and Rec.
Hello, everyone. So our group works very closely with Parks and Rec, so we do a lot of events, and we did a lot of events this year through them. So first of all, we helped set up the Boys and Girls Club and the Jackson and Baldwin Auctions. In addition, with the Boys and Girls Club, we prepared, we, multiple times throughout the year, we helped prepare grilled cheese for the kids. During the Christmas season, we got the opportunity to volunteer at the Dinner with the Grinch, and we got to help run the Bouncy Castle at the Christmas Extravaganza. Finally, we set up the mother-daughter tea, ran water stations at our local Seaport River Run, and did our annual 8th Street Trash Pickup. These are some of the photos from those events this year, and then I'm going to be passing it over to Scout Alfred to explain our independent events.
Good evening. My name is Scout Alfred, and along with Parks and Rec, we also try to organize our own individual events. So this year, we held an informational booth at LHS's Family Night at Bengal Field and a booth at Christmas Extravaganza at the Nez Perce County Fair Building. This was kind of continued with our goal of outreach for this year. This year, we also volunteered at the YWCA a couple of times. We tried to do pole painting every year, which is something we all really enjoy. And this year, we volunteered to help with childcare on Martin Luther King Days while the presenters were presenting, so that way parents could enjoy the presentation and also know that their children are in a safe environment. This year, we also volunteered at the Food Bank, which is something that we plan to do again in the future because we really enjoyed it. And we also organized our very own blanket drive in the LC Valley, which is something you'll hear from our next member, Sophia Gil, a little more on, but that was really something special that we did this year. And here are some photos from these events this year. This is Sophia Gil presenting the blanket drive.
Hello, everyone. So my name is Sophia Gil. I'm co-president of City Youth Leadership Council, and I'm here to talk to you today about our blanket drive. So our blanket drive took place from December 17th to the January 21st. Our goal was to warm the LC Valley, and by doing this, we set up multiple blanket drop stations around our community. We dropped them at Rozar's Grocery Outlet, the Orchard Boys and Girls Club, and the Lewiston Tribune. There, people could drop new and used blankets, which we would then collect and donate. A few of us also set up a station outside Rozar's where we would collect cash donations, which we would then later purchase new blankets to donate with. So from those cash donations, we got about $120, which we purchased new blankets with, and then altogether, we donated about 30 to, no, 20 to 30 blankets, my bad. So we donated those blankets to OUI, YWCA, and the youth, sorry, the Youth Resource Center of the Lewis-Clark Valley. This was our first year doing this event, and it was very successful, and we look forward to doing this event again. So on the next slide, yeah. So that's our flyer, and that's some of our members dropping off blankets. Next, I'm going to hand it over to Grace Mitchell.
Hello, I'm Grace Mitchell. I'm going to be discussing applications for the council. Our grade requirement for application is 7th through 12th grade, and they must be attending the Lewiston School District. Applicants may begin council beginning September or January. To find application paperwork, you must contact Raymond Padrina, our liaison, or a current member of the council in order to receive and return paperwork. You can also find paperwork online on the city of Lewiston website in the Parks and Recreation section. Raymond's email, the website link, and the application link are as seen on the slide.
Okay, this is the end of our presentation, and we'd like to open the floor to any questions.
Counselors, questions, compliments, accolades, counselor forcement?
Compliments, comments. This, for me, is like one of the most exciting things of being on city councils, when I get to see how many people are involved, and especially our youth being involved in the community and coming up here. And it's not easy to talk in front of a camera and people, and so I just commend you for making our community better. It's, it's not an easy feat, and I just hope you keep your drive and dedication that you already have shown so far and continue to do that through life because you guys are the people that are going to change the world when you do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Counselors, others? Well, I'm going to go back down the line here. Alexa, Tristan, Kalen, Avery, Scout, Sophia, Grace, and of course, Ray. Thank you all very much for what you're doing for our city. It's very much appreciated. I didn't know you did so much. I learned something tonight, and I'll go back and review that. So thank you very much. And I want to congratulate you too for your good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, counselors, we have item 4B, Valley Vision. We have a presentation by the executive director, Jerry Chavez, regarding the accomplishments of Valley Vision. Jerry, if you'd please introduce yourself for the record, and just remember to speak up loudly, clearly, slowly, so we can all hear you at home too that are watching. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Very good. My name is Jerry Chavez, president and CEO of Valley Vision. It's always a pleasure in my career when I get to be in front of council members, and want to thank you for the opportunity to do so today. We prepared some slides to give this council and citizens a preview of what changes have been under, what we've done, sparked changes with Valley Vision. I'm reminded, I've only been here six months. Then six-month period of time, we've taken an organization and we spun it 180 degrees around. Some of those changes are behind conversations with the board itself. Some of those changes are very visible. But we don't make changes with Valley Vision just for the sake of making changes. We do that purposely with the intent that we will become a location of choice, we will become more efficient in economic development, and I'm reminded that we don't do this for ourselves. We do this for the area residents. So with that being said, let me go ahead and start the presentation. Probably about four months ago, we had a work session with my Board of Directors. At that particular time, we underwent a discussion about how do we change our culture? And the culture is, how do we act with one another? How do we act with our partners? How do we act with government officials? With the intent of, we needed to make some change. But this particular quote came out of our work session. We needed not only to develop the culture, but a long-term game plan with a clear roadmap. First two months, it was very apparent that there was a lot of misconceptions, perceptions about Valley Vision. Over the course of time, we're going to go ahead and clarify that and help people understand what we do on a daily basis. We'll start by an internal perspective. This is, I don't want to say guiding principles, but the discussion at the board level was one of, why do we want to make changes? The changes are based upon, we want to take control of the outcome. We're not going to rely on others day in and day out to produce the results that we need to deliver to this community. We want to not only be very proactive, because in lead generation, if you're not out there doing it yourself, you can't rely on Department of Commerce or others to bring the particular leads to the organization or to the community itself. And more importantly, we want to take an aggressive target market approach to meet those goals. Externally, we want to elevate the organization's performance. And why? Top, top performers close deals at the end of the day. We want to be amongst that group of individuals. But we do this because the LC Valley deserves the best that we can be, day in and day out. It's something that I've practiced all my career. It's something that guides me on a daily basis. But we don't do this because of ourselves, much like your council that I'm addressing today. We do this for the people that live here in the valley today, and more importantly, those people that are going to live here in the valley into the future. At the end of the day, we want to make the valley a location of choice, not only for businesses, but for people to come and live, work, enjoy the quality of life. Typically, in any economic development organization, specifically the Typically, in any economic development organization, specifically the programs that I've led in my 27-year career, basically two programs that drive our daily activities. One of those is business attraction. I'm going to talk about that right now. And in addition to that is business retention and expansion. But our strategy is fivefold in terms of finding businesses to locate to this region. First, we got to determine what are the best-fit industries, based upon strengths and weaknesses, also based upon what's occurring in the marketplace today. We want to determine what markets are best fit to find those particular businesses. Some markets that are prime, some markets very strategic, while other markets may be strategic into the future. We have to determine that, not today, but tomorrow. We want to develop a presentation for what I call, when I knock on doors, what is a business case? Why do companies want to pay attention to us? Why do they want to seek living and investing their capital in the Elsie Valley? We'll begin our prospecting mission or finding or hunting those businesses later on this month, and then we'll do follow-up activity. Those are the steps, the metrics that get us there are, we will travel to four markets. I'll describe those markets in greater detail here in a short bit. But understand that 35 business-to-business meetings will be held within one year's period of time. This is something that we hire through a consultant, national leader in economic development, prospecting, and they are charged with producing those 35 business leads. We'll aim to convert those leads into prospects. Typically, that conversion may be between 1% to 5%. And the programs that I've utilized and developed and managed, that number is very high, much higher than 2% to 5%. And at the end of the day, we'll schedule five site tours to the Elsie Valley in one year. So that process is threefold. You've got to find a business first. You've got to bring that business to this community so they could kick the tires, open the hood, make sure the engine runs. And third, you've got to close a deal. So those are the three major steps to get us into a... Markets that we'll be marketing to, California, obviously. California businesses are leaving that market in droves. Why not present the opportunity to have them come set up business here in the Elsie Valley? Oregon, Washington as well, and then Canada. Sectors, there are six sectors. Two of those are longstanding business industries that have a rich history in the Elsie Valley. Four of them are brand-new. They are food processing, energy processing, CNC machinery manufacturing, Department of Defense. The other two, weapons ammunition manufacturing, outdoor recreation manufacturing, those are longstanding sectors that have done very well. And we don't want to forget about our past, but more importantly, how we can build those particular industries, sectors going forward. As I said before, we'll start our marketing later on this month with 35 leads and hopefully five site tours within one year. Very excited about that. Very specific programming. Not a lot of economic development organizations or executive directors or president CEOs know how to utilize that program, but we do here at Valley Vision. Wrong way. Business retention and expansion. This is our programming where we pay attention to those existing businesses. What existing businesses? The 21, what we call primary sector or basic sector businesses in the Elsie Valley. And by definition, basic sector, primary sector are, one of 50% or more of that revenue comes from outside the region. So the other companies that are producing goods on a daily basis, those goods are not sold here locally. So in reference, that's new wealth coming into the community. Once again, that's what separates us from everybody else. We are, our programs, our efforts, our activities are directed to basic sector or primary sector businesses. We'll utilize a standard software-driven business retention and expansion program that we will purchase, very specific, and seven pages of questions that are, really dive into business activities on a daily basis. But we're there to utilize this program, not one of, we'll meet somebody for coffee and try to understand what they do. We'll conduct confidential one-on-one meetings with a volunteer team. Volunteer team will be Valley Vision Board of Directors, some of those you see before you. Other team members that we want to enlist in that volunteer group are elected officials. Elected officials need to be able to hear some of those challenges that our companies are facing. And then other people that have an interest that are mindful of and want to help in economic development. We'll conduct volunteer training, do the one-on-one meetings beginning in this fall, and through the course of three months, conduct 21 of those meetings. Collect the data. We're not there to fix issues during that one-on-one meeting. We're there to gather information, put that information into the database, and look for reoccurring themes so we can drive business retention and expansion activities. I'm going to shift gears a little bit, talk about product development. This is our effort in how we position the valley to capture deals. It's one thing to find deals, it's one thing to court them, but at the end of the day, you have to be able to use some tools that will allow you to close a deal. We'll upgrade our website with industry standards and in particular, better messaging, more proactive, more informational site information is part of that platform. Not only do we want to be able, have people look at the valley through our website, but we want to be able to address some of the building needs that our current employers or future employers don't have. Some people may say, well, we have buildings that are not occupied in the Elsie Valley, and that's true. Those buildings in those locations are not industrial-based, or they are commercial retail. And as you can understand, it's hard to put an industrial building in the heart of your commercial district. So we're going to change that landscape, and this is how we were able to accomplish quite a bit in Indiana. Third action, we're going to develop an incentive package, both from local resources and state resources, to help us compete on a regional basis with those companies when they come and finally want to talk to us about coming to the Elsie Valley to operate. Going to launch our website ahead of prospecting. Yet this month, we're going to build a program for our buildings by July. That construction should take about a year. So we've got about a year to try to, you know, find companies, bring them to a point where they get ready to make a commitment, but also possibly have them understand we are willing to build a building for them as well. So, once again, a lot of changes within Elsie Valley, and I'm very happy to describe some of those. There are a lot that are not here. I can tell you, this board of directors, there's 11 of my board members here, that they have gone through a lot of discussion to get us to this point right now. Everybody's very interested in how we move this program forward, but more importantly, what are the deliverables that others can see for you? They can see how we are going to meet our goals and objectives, if you will. At the end of the day, we want to make the Elsie Valley a location of choice. That's our plan, and I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jerry. Counselors, questions? Counselor Specklemeyer.
Jerry, I think it looks like a great plan, and I appreciated the presentations we had before. And I just wanted in here, you didn't address, in your background, you had before helped cities with developers for affordable housing, helping them get the workforce to come in. Can you explain some of that as well?
Yes, Counselor. You know, I've had a 27-year career history across a lot of communities, and I've been blessed. I've had board members that have taken these concepts and helped me move them forward. But being in North Dakota or Indiana, when I was president and CEO of those organizations, we would get tasked often with fixing problems. Some of those problems were in the workforce space, some of those problems were with housing. So in workforce space in North Dakota, we actually recruited employees for our area employers. In Indiana, we took great pride in developing professional housing so our employers can bring young, talented engineers to that community. And sometimes that meant creating an incentive package to incite developers to come in and do a major development, housing. So do have some experience. Typically, once we get our program underfoot, then we get to expand ourselves and have conversations on how possibly we can help solve some of the communities or some of the issues that are facing this community or the other community across the river. Did that cover your question?
Yes, sir. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. I've had the opportunity to work with Jerry, and I think I know most of the board members. And I've really enjoyed our relationship. Jerry's very engaged. I've learned a few things from him. Maybe he's learned a couple of things from me, I don't know.
I have.
But I've really enjoyed getting to, you know, I guess for me, see a little bit different side of the mission, the vision of Valley Vision, and I've come to appreciate that more. So I can say that as a pitch for the board and the people that are here tonight. One of the criticisms I had in the past was I was looking for fresh ideas, new ideas, you know, and I didn't feel like I was getting them, you know, representing the people. And I've seen a lot of fresh ideas and new ideas that I have some faith in, and I think they're going to materialize. And Jerry's been very generous to include me in some of those discussions, so I feel very fortunate, and I think it's a good direction for the city to go. So I just appreciate your being a part of this community and the work that you've done so far, and I know we have a lot of good work ahead of us, so.
Appreciate your comments, Mayor.
Counselor Lick.
Jerry, could you send your presentation to Kerry so it can be distributed? As the council member that felt that there were several contracts that needed to be looked at from a constitutional manner, and met with you and said, I needed to see metrics, measurables, that we could do a contract, we cannot just give money away. And so I feel that you have addressed that, and I'm very pleased, and I do feel that there is a breath of fresh air coming from your board, and so I do appreciate that as well. So thank you for that, and thank you for the presentation.
Counselor Schroeder.
Thank you. Jerry, it's been a great delight to be on Valley Vision, by the way, and I volunteered to be on it because I didn't know what they did. So I took it upon myself to volunteer to be there as their liaison. But can you explain to, maybe a lot of the people in the room know the answer, but to the general public that are listening, I think, could you expand just a little bit on the fact that you're bringing in new money, not the retail?
You know, I wish my secretary, Ann Watkins, was here, because she presents this very, very well, and hopefully I can match that.
Yeah, why don't we have, yeah, and do it? That's great. Yes.
There you go.
Well, I've been part of the season to change of Valley Vision, and I'm super excited about it. But the big thing that really resonated with me and the reason why Jerry is here and why, one of the many reasons we chose him, was that I felt that we had past had a problem clearly defining what we did. We were very busy doing what we were doing, but we couldn't articulate what we were focusing on. So I'm very pleased in our mission to recruit primary sector businesses, because what those are, are those bring new money to the valley. And to more clearly define that, it's not retail, and it's not businesses that come here, sell their wares, and send their money outside of the community. This is new money to our community to help raise our standard of living here. So primary sector businesses are those that will either service our existing businesses and make our existing businesses stronger, or they will bring their business here, sell outside of the community, and the majority of the money will stay here, helping raise our standard of living. So I'm very excited about that, and I also am excited to help expand the tax base where businesses can help take a little bit of the burden off of the property tax burden of our homeowners, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Excellent job.
Yes, very good.
That was going to be my question. She asked it for me.
Counselors, if there's no more comments or questions, Jerry, do you have a closing comment for us?
No, I think, Mayor, it's rather refreshing to come to this region and to be embraced in terms of the thoughts and initiatives that go forward, and always am pleased to be in front of counselors. If not today, then else, another time. Maybe there's specific questions you have. I certainly appreciate Councilmember Specklemeyer's question in terms of housing and workforce. We will get into those particular venues and issues, but we've got to take care of the core before we can leave board.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
And thank you to your board and members for being with us here tonight. You're welcome to stay, but I'm sure you have other things to do too. But we just appreciate you being here tonight with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, counselors, next up, we are going to move to agenda item five. This is a public hearings and related action items. Item eight, public hearing, 2023-2027 Consolidated Plan, 2023 Action Plan, and Analysis of Impediments. Accepting testimony in the 2023-2027 Consolidated Plan, 2023 Action Plan, Analysis of Impediments, Don Ortiz. Don, before you begin, I'll just lay down a couple of things here. The subject of the public hearing has been announced. The hearing process will work as follows. I will open the public hearing. We'll have a staff presentation, testimony from the public, if there is any. You'll have three minutes, and then I will close the public hearing. So with that, counselors, I will open the public hearing and turn the floor over to Ms. Don Ortiz. If you'd please introduce yourself for the record, and remember to speak up loudly and clearly so those listening at home can hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm Don Ortiz, Community Development Specialist, and I'm going to be presenting the Community of Development Block Grant 2023 to 2027 Consolidated Plan and the 2023 Action Plan. This is kind of the final chapter of this. I know on May 1st of 2023, we had Jessica Fish with Mosaic provide a summary of the data that they collected, had, and the public they spoke with. And compiling all that data, they came up with the planned goal summary. This is the consolidated plan goal summary, so do keep in mind that this is over a four-year period. The top goal was improving housing access and quality. The second goal was providing housing and services for people experiencing or at risk of homelessness. The third goal is improve public facilities and infrastructure. Fourth is provide public services. Fourth is provide public services. And the fifth was planning and administration. You can see the funding that was split out. Do keep in mind again that this is over a four-year period, so it does seem a little high. So to break that down, I'm going to do it to the 2023 Action Plan, which is this year. So we were allocated $242,283. I estimate that we might have $25,000 in program incomes. That's money coming back in from our previous projects that we've had, which gives me a total of $267,283. We had a few activities come in, and I kind of broke them down into the goals that you saw previously on the previous slide. So for improving housing access and quality, we're going to continue our home repair program. So we put $100,000 to that. We also got an application from Interlink to do ADA ramps. So we did $20,000 for that. For homelessness, the Lewiston School District, we are going to do $6,000 for a program that they are going to apply for. Public facilities and infrastructure, we have about $80,000 there. Public services, we have Willow Center in LC Valley Habitat. Those together, $15,000. And then the last we have is planning and administration. We set aside $45,670. That does also assist with the home repair program for certain analysis that I have to do for lead-based paint. So for breaking down these projects, the first one that we recommend is the Lewiston Independent School District Homelessness Service. We recommend about $6,000 that they're requesting. This is also considered a public service to benefit that goal number two for us. The LC Valley Habitat for Humanity, they requested $5,000 for a tool lending library for local families. This would allow low to moderate or anybody, any citizen, to access yard tools to assist with their housing on the outside. And this is also considered a public service, and it would assist with goal number one. The Willow Center has requested $10,000 this year. It's a peer support group, another public service, but this would help goal number four for public service and economic opportunity. Interlink has requested $20,000 to provide safety improvements such as ADA access ramps, handrails, and grab bars to low, moderate persons or limited clientele. This would be a goal number one, improving housing and quality. The next one is public facilities and infrastructure. I have about $80,613 to provide for improvement. These are not sets. Wanted to see if anything else would come in or any applicants would come in, and then we can go from there. And then last, we have that 2023 Home Repair Program, $100,000 to rehabilitate low to moderate income. This also helps with housing affordability, so goal number one. And then we have that admin of $45,670. It administrates a CDBG program. I'm hoping to train for lead-based paint this year in-house. That would save us the money, and then including publications and filing and supplies. This gives a little bit more of a breakdown on how much was allocated, where the money is, and then total for 2022. I still have some open programs from last year. The Home Repair Program, I still have $74,728. It will be spent by July 31st. I just haven't allocated it out yet for the program for the houses that I'm assisting with right now. The Northwest Children's Home, they were awarded $87,800. They have not started yet due to supplies and getting permits through the state. The Willow Grove Peer Support still has just over $4,000 to utilize. We have our micro enterprise assistance, $44,000, that we are hoping to get off the ground soon. And then we took in $65,950 of program income last year. That's pretty high. We had a lot of previous applicants sell their home, and so when they sell their home, they have to pay back their lien and their loan. We had a public comment period from June 7 of 2023 to July 12 of 2023 for these plans. I had one public comment that came through, and that would be recorded in the consolidated plan and the action plan. I believe it was also provided by email to the City Council. And then I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Don. Councillors, Counselor Littke.
Don, can you tell me more about what the Lewiston School District is going to do? I'm assuming it's more on the services, but it's listed under providing housing and services. Can you explain whatever they've got going on?
Yes, so they are going to providing services such as assisting with, you can, I can assist with utilities, I can assist with rent, and that can keep these families in their home longer. We can also assist with clothing. So these people are either going to be at risk for homelessness, or they are homeless, and we might provide some hotel rooms for them through that group. It's a public service, but we file it through goal number two because it is a homelessness. Does that clarify?
I have a follow-up. And then can you explain the micro enterprise assistance, what that entails?
Yes, so last year, we were going to put together a program to assist small businesses with small loans. Unfortunately, I was not able to get that up and going off the ground yet, so hopefully to continue that on. Or if the City Council wants to, they can recommend reallocating those funds somewhere.
Councillor Spicklemeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Don, one thing, I was looking through the great big 500-page deal. I was surprised at how little input you got.
How much I have?
In here, it said like 25 people filled out the surveys?
Oh, yes. No, there was not much coming back.
So when you did the work groups, were they big or they the same people or?
They were small, so in-person was small. I think there was about six of us, if my memory serves me right, six or eight. Same with the virtual one that we had. I was not at the one that they had with the YWCA, but there was not very much feedback in regards to this.
I noticed a lot of the concerns or the comments were very consolidated to specific issues, so.
Councillors, questions? You need to think about that for a minute. Don, let me see if there's anyone here from the public that might want to provide testimony. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Snyder. I'm the Executive Director of LC Valley Habitat for Humanity. We're very excited to be part of this proposal. We have based a program on a very successful Pocatella program where we have an electric and manual tool, lawn and garden, basically lawn closet, and people will be able to come down to our restor. If they can't afford gas for their lawnmower, they don't have a place to house their tools, they want to start a garden, they can check those out and then return those when they're done with them. We feel like this will help with helping city code, with blight in neighborhoods, as well as safety issues in terms of making homes safer for people.
Councillors, comments, questions?
I have another presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions at a later date. And thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. If there's no further comments from public. Don, are you done with your presentation or do you need to? Are you done? Okay. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. At 6:57. Counselor Schroder. Well, let me, I guess, introduce the agenda item. Councillors, next we'll go to Agenda Item 5B, 2023-2027 Consolidated Plan, 2023 Action Plan and Analysis of Impediment, considering approval of the 2023-2027 Consolidated Plan, 2023 Action Plan and Analysis of Impediment. This is an action item. Counselor Schroder.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2023-2027 Consolidated Plan, 2023 Action Plan, and table the analysis of impediments until the next City Council meeting and add citizens' participation plan to the next agenda. Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Forsman, to approve the 2023 to 2027 Consolidated Plan, 2023 Action Plan, and table analysis of impediments until next City Council meeting and add citizens' participation plan for the next agenda. Counselor, would you like to explain your motion or councillors, do you have any questions? Counselor, I think the motion is being made in part because we did not have all of the elements that we needed. There were some questions on the analysis of impediments, so we can take this up at a later time. The, we do need to get the action plan and the consolidated plan moving, so it would move those two forward, so Ortiz can complete her work, and then we can take up the analysis of impediment, then the participation plan, citizen participation plan at the next agenda if you approve the motion. Discussion, Counselor Littke.
So we're approving the plan, but like the open activities, so like the micro enterprise assistance, that $44,000, is that up for discussion on where that money could go? Or are we approving for those that same plan?
The motion is to approve, to approve the consolidated plan and the action plan as presented to us tonight. Thank.
Mr. Mayor.
Don.
Just to clarify, that $44,000 for the micro enterprise, that was approved in the 2019 Action Plan. If we wanted to, we would have to amend that action plan. So if it's something that they are interested, I can bring it up at a later date.
Counselor Littke.
If I could just see the components, because as I, I don't have a problem with small businesses retrieving these loans with whatever caveat comes with these funds. I'd just like to see that because as we heard tonight, there's businesses struggling currently because of conditions of our city. So if there's a way that we could see that and bring it back, that'd be great. But I, I think that was before my time, and I'd like to just see the components of that.
I'll put some stuff together, and I can send it to you, and I love input on it.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Spicklemeyer.
I was going to ask for clarification from Counselor Littke, but she answered it.
Okay, councillors, if there's no further discussion, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ours? Motion carries. Thank you, councillors. Thank you, Don. Sir Gravencroft, did you capture everything? Okay. Next up, councillors, we have Rule 116, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the councillors so request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda. Counselor Littke.
Mayor, it moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Littke, seconded by Counselor Schroder, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there discussion? Sir Gravencroft.
Council President Littke.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Thank you, councillors. Next up, we move to the active agenda, Item 107, Item A, IFB-23-017 Transfer Station Scale Rehabilitation, considering approval of an award for IFB-23-013 Transfer Station Scales, Scales Unlimited, Inc., in the amount of $187,500. This is an action item. We have Director Dustin Johnson with us here to present this item. Director Johnson, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. Tonight, the description kind of outlines everything that you're seeing in front of you tonight. This has been a longstanding capital project that's been planned up at the transfer station for as long as I have been here, for various reasons of supply chains, COVID, and some difficulties in getting the right scale out to bid. It's been some challenges, but we fortunately have got that turned around. We had two bids. The low bid was $187,500, which was a couple grand, 7,500 underneath, under engineer's estimate. So everything looks good from our perspective, and we just recommend approval.
Thank you. Director, councillors, questions? Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. So Director, in here, looking at your budget, you said that you were going to, you had $100,000 budgeted for it, and the rest was going to come from the transportation floor. So how much was budgeted for the floor?
The floor is, that one was a shot in the dark on that. I think that was $400,000. I'm, I don't know, actually. I don't know.
Where I'm coming with the question is, so is this money you're taking from the transportation floor budget is going to cover the?
Yes, yes. So the, these two capital projects, the scale and the transfer station floor have, both, the scale was first, and then we're going to do the floor. And so they keep getting budgeted, and then they keep getting bumped back. And so transfer station floor will get rolled into this one, complete, close out the scale, and then we'll move forward into 2025, and that was, we'll rebudget that next year for the floor.
Thanks.
And Counselor, I think, I looked at that number not too long ago, but I think it's a little over 200 is what the floors, like that two and a quarter or something like that.
Yeah, we, just on the transfer station floor, we did an analysis. So it's basically, we need to go back and look at, we did a cost-benefit analysis, and so we can go as cheap as $100,000. I mean, we can actually go under and just do asphalt, which would be terrible because it would, it wouldn't last long at all versus Cadillac where we could get some additives into the concrete and never be closed, and that was upwards of over anywhere closer to $1 million. And so we needed, we needed to do a cost-benefit analysis, and I can't remember where we fell. But again, that's a 2025 project, so I would tell you 400,000, I'd come back and it would be 600. So I don't, I don't want to predict where market would go, but it's in that neighborhood.
Councillors, I would entertain a motion. Counselor Schroder.
I make a motion to award IFB-23-017 to Scales Unlimited, Inc., and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the City of Lewiston and Sales Unlimited, Inc.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Kleberg. Award IFB-23-017 to Scales Unlimited, Inc., and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the City of Lewiston and Scales Unlimited, Inc. Is there further discussion? Clerk Gravencroft.
Council President Littkey.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier.
Aye.
Thank you, Counselors. Thank you, Clerk Gravencroft. Next up, we have Item B, Resolution 2023-28, Considering Approval of the State of Idaho Department of Environmental Quality Loan Offer, Acceptance in Agreement for Drinking Water Treatment Design and Construction between the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality and the City of Lewiston. This is an action item. Again, welcome back, Director Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. In front of you tonight is an agreement that was required by the State Department of Environmental Quality. Essentially, as you are aware, we had a rupture at the High Reservoir in January 18th. We've been in constant communication with our local, our state and federal jurisdictions in talking about funding. One avenue that came up fairly early was a, the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, carries an emergency fund. It's not a lot of money, but it is specifically programmed in the budget for instances like this. And so when we talked to them, there, I think there was one previous expenditure, and this was what was basically remaining in the fund. And so you will notice, it is a 0% loan with 100% principal forgiveness. And I'm not quite sure why they do it, but it's $225,000. And we, again, have been in communication with the DEQ. This, we've essentially spent the money already on, this was used specifically for, when we did that limited demolition and, and assessment of the existing reservoir. That was probably April, March, April, we did that. So, if you remember, we did, that was part of that contract that we brought in front of you at that point. So, this would cover generally most of that cost. So, that is what this funding would go for. It's a drop in the bucket, but it's highly, very much appreciated. I'm here for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Director. Counselors.
Motion?
Clerk Forsman, motions in order.
Motion to approve Resolution 2023-28.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Forsman, second by Counselor Schroder, to approve Resolution 2023-28. Counselor Littkey.
Dustin, just reading through this, since we've already spent it, I mean, there's a lot of components which allow us to have that 100% forgiveness. And I just want confirmation that we will have or will meet all those requirements.
Yes, that was quite the contract, going through all the, and so, yes, we have all of, we verbally have confirmed that we meet all the requirements within that, which is why we went for that specific task.
Counselor Littkey.
Just follow up. So, you verbally confirmed all those things. If, in this next process of us after approval, if you see something that gives you heartburn, can we come back to the table, or are we, we're in and we're going with this?
Yeah, I mean, as is with any program through the State of Idaho, or even the federal, you know, something may come up, some terms that, the fine print in it, I don't expect it to be there. You know, we've, we've been quite familiar with dealing with the DEQ and their state revolving fund, which is paid for, you know. We've utilized for our other treatments, or the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plant, well, everything else. So the terms and conditions are very much the same thing that we've already dealt with. So I don't expect any surprises, but never know.
Clerk Gravencroft.
Council President Littkey.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier.
Aye.
Thank you, Counselors. Thank you, Director. Next up, Counselors, Item C, Resolution 2023-24, Considering Approval of the Destruction of Video Footage Stored on the Lewiston Police Department's WatchGuard Server. This is next night, and we have with us tonight Chief Cusick. Chief, if you'd please introduce yourself. For the record, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Mayor, Counselors, good evening. Jason Cusick, Lewiston Police Chief. And I'm here to talk about the resolution for destruction of video that's currently on a WatchGuard server that you have in our basement of our police department right now. This was the server that was originally housing all of our videos, just the in-car camera videos, not the body cameras. We switched to Axon, I believe, in 2018. So in April of 2018 was the last recording on the server. 2019, their system coordinator, Brian Burso, was trying to do some conversions over from the server, and it found it was inoperable. Between him, IT, and also reaching out to WatchGuard and their techs, they all confirmed that they, nobody could gain access to the server. So in essence, it's, in a generic term, it's a, it's a perched server. Even the WatchGuard folks told us that the, they don't have any techs that are actually capable of working on the server anymore. So it's just been sitting since. So we've actually come up with an idea where we can repurpose the server. So, what the resolution is asking is that we're allowed to wipe all what is on it. We do know there is some video data, some car video on it. City code for anything other than what deemed a major crime, there's a six-year retention period, but Idaho State Code only requires five years. If any video on a server is deemed major crimes, then there's a 100-year retention service. We have no idea what's actually on it. So, by allowing us to wipe it, put on a whole new client, and repurpose it as storage for our Spillman server, additional media servers, and I'm sorry, storage, it will save us quite a bit of money. As we move into our upgrade into Spillman, they quoted out a 10 terabyte server at $55,000. This is a nine terabyte server. So it will get a lot of use, and will have it for quite a long time. I think that's really the fact. I think if we don't approve it tonight, then on advice of city attorneys, we should deem it withheld until April 10th of 2118, before we can schedule for destruction.
Chief Miner, standing at this, except, this is an exception to the record retention policy.
For the City of Lewiston.
This is a one-time exception and shall not apply to destruction of any other record unless authorized by the council in a future resolution.
Correct. Right now, we're about five years, two months, as far as destruction. So we would, that's why we're asking for the exception, or I'm asking for the exception from council, due to the fact that we're coming in about 10 months early under the standard destruction.
Good chief, Counselors.
Mayor.
Counselor Forsman.
Oh, I want to make sure I understand. So we don't know what's on it currently, but then by doing this, we can then find out what's on it, and?
No, we'll never know what's on it.
We'll never.
We want to go in and, there's a way that we can just wipe all data and just make it like it's brand new off the shelf, and then we can install new software that will enable us to start storing information on it again, digital media.
Oh, what?
Counselor.
How do we know if we're not getting rid of something that's printed to, I don't know, something that might come up later, a case later, or anything like that, that?
And honestly, we don't. There is, we do know there isn't video, but again, it's car camera video, it's not body camera. And generally, by the nature of the, of our activities, car cam is just what's out the windshield. So if we go into a house, or we're in use of force away from the car, or whatever activity officers have been involved with, that's going to be more body camera activity. This is just video out the front windshield.
Counselor Schroeder.
Motion.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution 2023-24. Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Littkey, to approve Resolution 2023-24. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Littkey.
Chief Cusick, I just want to say, not sure who was part of the team to come up with a plan to repurpose, but I commend them. Servers are not cheap, and especially servers that will need to be holding the information like we have. And as far as when you've come, I think you did your due diligence to confirm, we would never be able to pull that information off. So I'm in support of this one-time inclusion. So thank you for that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Further discussion? Clerk Gravencroft.
Council President Littkey.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Counselors. Next up, Item D, Resolution 2023-30, Considering Approval of a Soul Source Resolution Declaring Motorola Solutions, Inc. As the only vendor of maintenance services and additional modules for Flex software. Again, Chief Cusick, if you'd introduce yourself. For the record, the floor is yours.
Jason Cusick, Chief of Police. Again, it is, for his another resolution, this one for soul sourcing our computer aided dispatch system through Motorola. We've been with this particular vendor since 1992, supplying their Spillman CAD and RMS systems. We're going, we're in the process of re-upping into a five-year contract, but that does go over the threshold of the $50,000 for the procurement fee, just for the city and for Idaho code. That's why I'm here requesting the resolution for soul source, because Motorola is the only vendor that produces. Spillman is now being returned, rebranded as Flex, but there's no other vendor on the market that can either provide this, because it's proprietary software, or provide maintenance for it. The contract over the five years is well over that amount, but again, by, we'll be able to mitigate some of the funds and actually have cost savings over the course of the five years. But point of the resolution is just asking that council will consider it as a sole source vendor. And Motorola did even provide a letter that states that it is proprietary information which is developed and owned by Motorola Solutions. Motorola has not authorized another vendor access to the proprietary software code, and no third party is authorized to provide software support or maintenance.
Counselor Schroeder.
A motion.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution 2023-30. Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Forsman. Is there further discussion? Well, to approve the Resolution 2023-30.
Mayor.
Counselor Forsman.
Just want to commend again, we're looking for ways to save money, consolidate, be more efficient. So I appreciate you and your team. I, you've been, I don't know, I can't think of how long you've been on it now as the chief, but it seems like you're.
Once.
Yeah, you're actively there, and you're, you're hit the ground running. So I just appreciate all your hard work.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Counselors, hearing, no further discussion. Clerk Gravencroft.
Council President Littkey.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Counselors. Thank you, Chief Cusick. Counselors, next up, we have Item E, Purchase of Two Used Street Rollers, Considering Approval of a Purchase of Two Rollers in the Amount of $151,000 from Western States Equipment. This is an action item. We have Robin Braun, Mr. Braun with us tonight from our Fleet Services to present to us. Please introduce yourself. For the record, the floor is yours. Welcome.
City Council, this, I'm Robin Braun, Fleet Services Manager. We're looking at purchasing the two rollers from CAT at Western States. We're purchasing off of their lease return program. These are machines that are fairly new, they're 2018s. They'll last us a good long time. They've got low hours on them, being that they're a lease return. They have come under considerable amount, less than what we had projected for each one of the machines by going this way. And with us, we keep our equipment for a long-term. These here, one of them, we've had for over 20 years, since 1988. So it's come to the point that we can't get parts for them anymore, and they've ended their useful life. So, that's what I was proposing.
Thank you, Robin. Counselors, any questions? Counselor Schroeder.
Motion.
Motion's in order.
Motion to approve the purchase of two rollers from Western State Equipment and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the City of Lewiston and Western State Equipment. Second.
By Counsel, Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Forsman, to approve the purchase of two rollers from Western States Equipment and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between City of Lewiston and Western States Equipment. Is there discussion? Counselor Littkey.
I noticed in the notes that it said you had two quotes. Were those?
Two separate rollers.
For the, so did, I'm always a little confused, like, did this go out to bid? Did, how did this process work? Because usually it says, we, you know, we put it out, these were our best, lowest price, whatever. How does that, this process work?
A lot of it, we're looking at availability for repairs and local. We've had some businesses out of Spokane, but the problem we run into is timely repairs, if they're needed, and cost of service calls, which with Western, they're local, they're just eight miles out of town here, local to us. And with their lease program, none of the other dealers were able to meet any of that as far as prices go now.
Thank you.
Robin, I just want to ask you a quick question. Does this, one piece of equipment, it's got pretty low hours on it, doesn't it?
Yes. One of them is running 141 hours, and the other one has 802.
Counselor Spickelmeier.
So do we have, then, they will be replacing two that we have, and we will be accessing those?
Yes, yes. We'll do a surplus auction on them. And that, because they're old enough, they don't really want them for trade-ins. And that, so more likely with the age and the hours that are on them, and the repairs that are needed, they'll go surplus for somebody that has a light machine that needs parts.
That was going to be my next question, so, thank you. I'm going to ask another question, just so I can learn something. Do you get the service records, too?
Say that again?
Do you get the service records from CAT?
Yes, we'll have all of the service records that have been done to the machine up to this point. And both of them have had very little repairs that have needed to be done to them as far as actual breakdowns go.
I'll wait just one more second here before I ask Clerk Gravencroft for the rule call. Clerk Gravencroft.
Council President Littkey.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spickelmeier.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors, next up, we have Deferred Improvement Agreement. This is considering a Deferred Improvement Agreement between the City of Lewiston and TA Finch Investments, LLC, also known as Happy Day, an agreement to be provided prior to the meeting. Action items, which we have. Clerk DeGraw, do you have anything for us? Your name's listed on here. Okay. Good move.
Sorry, there was, there was an amendment of the agenda, and I got the short straw.
All right. Director Johnson, welcome. Welcome. Please introduce yourself again for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director, holder of the short stick. Here in front of you tonight, I will give you the best background that I can on this. Essentially, the mall was built in 1965, and there was a warehouse behind the mall that still exists today that was built in the same time period. And I'm not quite sure, but you will notice as part of this is packet, the original easement that was placed upon this warehouse in 1965. And so I'm kind of not clear why in 1965, they put this easement on this warehouse at the time. It had not changed ownership, there had not been any significant development in the last, however many years that was. This year, I believe, Happy Day Corporation purchased that warehouse and has intentions of making some significant improvements to it upon their. has intentions of making some significant improvements to it. Upon their building permit applications, it was discovered, at least to public work staff, that there is an easement, a stormwater easement underneath this warehouse. This is the same storm line that runs McCann property to the, I guess would be the south, running straight north-south, goes under this building, under the mall, continues underneath Roger Subaru, and onward down 21st Street, at least on that west side of the street. This has been a similar problem for other redevelopments within this corridor, and they've gone through similar, similar actions to relocate this line. In conversations with Happy Day, we sat down, and this obviously was happening right at the same time as the transfer of ownership with the mall and some other improvements of Roger Subaru was, was wrapping up their improvements at the time. And we decided, working with their develop, or their design professional and our staff, it may be of benefit to not hinder Happy Day to relocate this line before they start their improvements, that we allow them to put up a financial guarantee, which is in the form of a bond at 135%, to assure that that storm line will be moved, but allow them to work up a design, work with the city, and potentially work with the new ownership of the mall, to find a solution that will work with them. It is a five-year agreement, and if for five years that nothing has happened, and Happy Day won't return our calls, the city has the bond to go pull and do the work ourselves. I think that is about all. There's a lot of other things going on outside with this line and other developments, but I think that's all the necessary information you need for the reason for this agreement.
Thank you, Director. Council questions? I'm going to call on Jennifer Tangano here, our Assistant City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Jennifer Tangano, Assistant City Attorney. I just wanted to clarify for everyone, even though we're referring to it, Happy Day, technically, the agreement is between TA Finch Investments, LLC, who is the property owner. Happy Day is the lessee of the warehouse. So they don't actually own the property themselves, and this agreement is not with the Happy Day Corporation, but actually with TA Finch Investments, who is the, the property owner of record.
Yeah, for that clarification.
And then applicant has a representative here. If there's any questions for, for them.
Mayor.
Counselor Forsman.
So, as you mentioned, if nothing gets done after that timeline, then who, who pays the cost? I think I read it in here, but I want to make sure I understand.
So that's, the, the bond holds that money, so
Okay.
we would call the bond, and then, so, the bond, we call the bond, we get the money. So it's no money from the city, that we just call the bond, and then we have the funds to do the improvements ourselves.
Okay, thank you. That's what I want to make sure.
And we ask for an escalation on that, just for market price, and maybe the estimate was short, so it's 135% of what the estimate is.
Follow-up?
Counselor Forsman.
And this might add a bigger question for you, but did we have the same packet available to the public, just to get that?
It was submitted. I pulled, I u, I used the software. I pulled it up today. I did not go on the website and pull it myself, but that's a clerk question.
I'll take Clerk Ravenscroft first.
Thank you. Carrie Ravenscroft, City Clerk. That item was provided to us late Thursday afternoon, very late. So I believe the Assistant City Clerk was able to add that to our website on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
And then I would just like to note, too, there is a difference between what is on the agenda itself versus what was provided. The only difference in there is that on the agenda, it's referred to as the Deferred Improvement Agreement. As we finalized the language for it, it got renamed to Deferred Relocation Agreement, but it's still between the City of Lewiston and TA Finch Investments. As it was noticed on the agenda, we just changed the title of it, and that was really the, and then the references throughout that agreement to improvement agreement to relocation agreement was changed. So it, it was a minor change that, in the city attorney's opinion, didn't require amendment to the actual agenda, because the document and the substance of it is, remained the same.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, and it's page 507 of the agenda packet.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Carrie, go. Councilors, further questions? Counselor Schroeder.
Motion to approve the Deferred Relocation Agreement between the City of Lewiston and TA Finch Investments, LLC.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Forsman, to approve the Deferred Relocation Agreement between the City of Lewiston and TA Finch Investments, LLC. Is there further discussion? Counselor Lidkey.
Dustin, just be, when we talk about stormwater and the issues we've faced in the, you know, apprehension every time the sky turns gray in the last couple of days, just to talk about the timeframe again. In five years, if something became of, in a hurried sense, we can go in and have that discussion, because you'd also said that we have some other issues kind of hooked to that.
Yeah, it says the satisfaction of the Public Works Director. So the Public Works Director would say this, whatever was done satisfies the provisions within the agreement. If we need to amend the agreement, obviously, it would come back before the council for, for their signature.
No further discussion. Clerk Ravenscroft?
Council President Lidkey.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Thank you, councilors. Next up, we have item G, ordinances. Item G1, first reading, A, ordinance 4885, amending section 36.5-4 of the Lewiston City Code to remove the definitions of consumption rate and 100 cubic feet. This is an action item. Director Johnson, welcome. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. We're going to do some math. So the industry standard for measuring water is typically 100 cubic feet, so HCF. Unfortunately, many people don't consume that much water. And so the way we, we have metered it and billed it is by the 100 cubic feet. And so it came, I think it was a question to the mayor, asking, well, could we just do cubic feet? And I said, why would you want to do that? And we, we kind of did some digging, and it would be, it would be easier for utility billing. It would shrink, it would give you a more understandable number than .68, 100 cubic feet. You would get 68 cubic feet. So all this is, is a simple change of, it is now our unit of measurement within the sale of water would be cubic feet instead of 100 cubic feet. One clarifying issue with this would not take effect until April 1st, when our new billing cycle starts over. So it'll all, all switch over at the same time, when we adopt the new rates for water. And I stand for questions.
Director, April 1 is when the change would take effect?
October 1st, beginning of the new fiscal year, with the new, new budget.
Thank you. Counselor Lidkey.
Sheriff Johnson, I'm confused how removing the definitions changes the calculation. So and not having it, the whole section in front of me, I'm just, if you could explain, like, removing those definitions, is there, is there a definition or a section within that particular section of code that defines how we're going to calculate it from here on?
That is a good question. I did not draft the ordinance that went through legal. I, I, we, my understanding is we removed the definition of 100 cubic feet, but the 100 cubic feet has already been, or cubic feet has already been defined in there. So we're just removing the 100 cubic feet units definition, since we don't use it for anything, or will not use it for anything after this.
Counselor Lidkey.
I don't know how to follow that up. I, I'm fine with removing them. I just, I, and I've had, I'm having some user error on the city site, so I could not find this code to answer my own question, which I try to do without. But, so, I, that is a question I have. Somebody could clarify that that still will be in there for user to go in and find, how, how is my bill calculated?
We can get that on the next readings.
Thank you.
Counselor Schroeder.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4885.
Let's go ahead. Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Kleberg, to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4885. Is there further discussion?
Mayor.
Counselor Forsman.
It was a good thought to say that. So to the mayor, right, it was a discussion between you guys of, why not remove this to make it easier for hopefully people to understand and metabolize? So, pretty, pretty good discussion, and I appreciate that.
Well, I can add to the discussion a little bit. I received input from a customer who asked why we build in 100 cubic feet when we have the ability to bill in cubic foot increments. And under today's billing cycle, if you're 51 cubic feet, you're going to pay for 100 feet. If you're 49, you pay zero. So that's what the effect of this changes is that you'll actually pay for what you use. And so in terms of revenue to the city, it probably washes out, because some folks are going to be rounded up from 51 to 100, and some are going to be rounded down from 49 to zero. And so what's the net effect when it's all over at the end of the year? I don't know, but it's not significant right now in the rounding up. And so I think another part of this is, is I was visiting with, you know, customers, the city residents. It, it helps, I think, too, when we start talking about water conservation, and gives somebody incentive to say, okay, I'm going to pay for what I actually use. So if I want to, you know, not put so much water down the waistline, or if I don't want to take too long of a shower or something else, there's an incentive there to say, I'm only going to pay for what I use. So I think that's going to be very consistent with some of the other programs that you're going to be looking at here in the next couple of months, when we start talking about fees. And so this is, I think, fairly consistent. I think it's a good change. And the language, I believe, is there, because I've looked at those tables, but we'll have another shot at it when we go to our second and third readings, so.
Yep.
There's no further discussion and no amendments. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Ravenscroft?
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4885, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston, amending section 36.5-4 of the Lewiston City Code to remove the definitions of consumption rate and 100 cubic feet, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Councilors, next up, item B, ordinance 4888, amending section 6-3 of the Lewiston City Code regarding alcoholic beverage catering permits obtained by businesses located outside of the city limits, amending section 21-7B regarding application fees for business location and door name changes, amending section 21-6 regarding security guard or armored guard delivery service license requirements. This is an action item. And we have Ms. Dawn Ortiz with us tonight. Dawn, please introduce yourself again for the record. The floor is yours.
Hello again, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Dawn Ortiz, and I'm the Community Development Specialist. And we are recommending approval of ordinance number 4888 that clarifies a couple sections of code. The first one being our alcohol beverage catering permits. There's no clarification on what happens when a out-of-town business applies for an alcohol catering permit. So we wanted clarification that they could utilize their state alcohol license, instead of having to acquire not only a business license, a catering permit, and alcohol license from us. The second change was to clarify specific changes that trigger a new license and the fees that acquire with that. The third and final one is clarification that for security guards or armored car delivery services, they are required to get an Idaho State Police fingerprint check for their first license.
Thank you, Dawn. Council, questions? Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Mr. Mayor, so, Dawn, my concern with it would be that it would be, it wouldn't be fair to existing businesses within the city that had to jump through the hoops to get the alcohol license, and when they bid on jobs, or, you know, that they would, you would, wouldn't be fair.
I could see that. But they are not local, so they don't have an address to tie that alcohol license to. So we felt it beneficial to not require that.
Counselor Lidkey? Yeah, okay.
Mayor.
Counselor Forsman.
Sorry, can you just say, what would this look like if we also took it away for those within the city limits? So now they don't have to?
They would not have to purchase an alcohol license.
At all.
They still acquire it through the state. They just would not get a city one.
Thank you.
But they would still have to get an alcohol catering permit.
Yes, correct.
Councilors, you have ordinance 4888 before you. Counselor Schroeder?
I move to combine the second and, no, sorry. I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4888.
Okay. Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Kleberg, to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4888. Is there further discussion or amendments? Favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails. It's a voice vote. Motion failed.
But who?
Can't hear you. Three to two. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Next up, second and third readings, ordinance 4884, considering implementing the City Council's decision NCNC 23-000003, declaring that certain real property be removed from the medium-density residential R3 zone to the community commercial C3 zone, and amending the official zoning act for the City of Lewiston. This is an action item. Second and third readings, you've had this before you, councilors? Counselor Schroeder?
I make a motion to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading full of ordinance number 4884.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Forsman, to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4884. Is there discussion?
Follow-up motion?
We have to address the first motion, unless you have amendment to the original. No? Okay, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Schroeder?
I move to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4884.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Forsman, to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4884. Is there discussion or amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, councilors. Next up, we have 2B, under under item G on our agenda, ordinances. Item B is ordinance forty-eight eighty-two repealing chapter thirty-six, article four of the Lewiston City Code, enacting a new article four to chapter thirty-six, which establishes a system stormwater drainage system user fees to fund the provision of proprietary stormwater services by the city to property owners within the city's jurisdiction. Director Johnson, welcome back. Please introduce yourself for the record. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director, in front of you to talk about ordinance forty-eight eighty-two. This is the second and third reading. We've, I've already gave you a formal presentation on the first reading. Essentially, what this does is create the stormwater utility. It does not set the rate, just so we're clear. This is basically the creation of the stormwater utility. The provisions are out here, what we've described as the stormwater ordinance. One thing I did want to bring to your attention is that this has gone before the Public Works Advisory Commission. And I do apologize. Typically, the intent will be to have the, the Public Works Advisory Commission look at this before it gets to the first reading, but the council or commission had just formed, so they had not had a chance to review this. And so this is why you're seeing it in front of you now. And I guess I'm a little bit excited in that I have had members that weren't city staff, not necessarily the city council, members that are citizens that are a part of an advisory board, who took their job seriously, reviewed the ordinance in all of its fine form and provided feedback and some edits. They were outlined within the updated version you've got. Most of them are just clarifying comments on how this ordinance is intending to meet the provisions within the MS four permit, the federal mandate. So those provisions were in here. So that's why this is amended in front of you from the first reading, in addition to any comments you may have tonight. The only other thing I wanted to address, which I guess I did not bring up thus far, is we had an event on Friday at three o'clock on a Friday afternoon. We were out there and experiencing, I think most of everybody in Lewiston experienced, what storm drainage looks like. I will say that was an event. That was not typically what we do for design in is a twenty-five-year event. Once in twenty-five years, you should experience something that our infrastructure that we're designing to should be able to handle that. That was not a twenty-five-year event. I'm not a hydrologist, but the numbers that we've seen from the airport, that was point four one inches of rain in six inches. And that's at the airport. I think we're, all indications was it was possibly more intense down, closer to downtown. This ordinance and a stormwater utility will not save you that you will never have anything like that. This, this provision helps you put safeguards in place that you are maintaining the infrastructure, that you're designing the infrastructure to a higher standard. What I'm trying to prevent is that fifteen years from now, as I'm trying to retire, people say, we've been paying this ordinance and we had a hundred-year event and my basement flooded. That's not what this does. But this does better prepares the city and the infrastructure for events that we experienced on Friday. So I'll get off my soapbox, but that was, that was something that we've got to see how infrastructure handles or does not handle strong events like that. So I'm here for questions, comments.
Dustin?
Counselor Forsman?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. So just so I can metabolize that, we're saying in order, there's not any way to completely prevent the events that happened on Friday with that amount of rainfall that we had. Am I understanding that correctly?
I mean, you're, you're asking an engineer. An engineer will tell you, I can build you anything. It's just going to cost you more money. We would have massive retention ponds. We had massive pipes and it would be a complete waste of money. Sometimes you will see certain areas, you know, that are very protected, that they will design for a hundred-year storm just so they cannot lose that critical piece of infrastructure. To safeguard a city like Lewiston for a hundred-year storm, we, we don't have the money. It, it just wouldn't be feasible and we would have to basically reconstruct the city. So I'm saying what, what is feasible is a twenty-five-year storm. So we know a fifty-year storm will happen, you know, by the books, should happen every fifty years and we're going to have localized flooding. But at fifty years, I think that's something that we can handle, even a twenty-five-year storm. That is something that we should expect.
Okay.
So that's, that's an engineer explanation there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Your soapbox is getting used. We're going to have to get you another one. Counselor Littke?
Just for a comment, and I had questions during the first reading and I appreciate that you and I were able to have a conversation. And while I am completely for trying to figure out a budget that decreases the burden on the taxpayer, I think that this is an ordinance that we should all be able to get behind. And I'm saying this because the reasons that I, as I do research and read our history and, and prior council decisions is that we've not had dedicated funds for things of this nature, which means there's been a little bit of money put in front of the council and they get to decide how to maneuver those funds as that comes up. This sets in motion a segregation of these funds. This ordinance, I believe, page thirteen really walks through and protects that funding through the segregation that we will produce a counting of receipts and expenditures that we can, as a city, appropriate other monies in there, but cannot use this money for other things like potholes and other things. And so I appreciate the city staff's work on this ordinance to essentially, we hear the word fee and we immediately, I do it too. I, I hear fee and I think, here's one more thing. But what I like about this ordinance is that it says, we're going to put money where it needs to be put. And as a city council person, I am in full support of making sure that we're dedicating funds specifically to our infrastructure. So I am in support of this ordinance.
Is there a motion, Counselor Littke?
Nope.
Oh, was the soapbox moment.
Counselor Schroeder?
I move to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-eight eighty-two.
Second?
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forsman to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-eight eighty-two. Is there further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Schroeder?
I move to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number forty-eight eighty-two.
Second?
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forsman to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number forty-eight eighty-two. Is there any discussion or amendments?
I'd like to make an amendment. I moved, I'm sorry?
I made the original motion.
Oh, so I can't probably do that. Okay. Bye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and make a motion to amend ordinance forty-eight eighty-two to reflect the changes set forth in the document titled Proposed Amendments to Ordinance Number Forty-eight Eighty-Two for the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting.
Second?
Been moved by Counselor Kleberg, seconded by Counselor Schroeder to amend ordinance number forty-eight eighty-two to reflect the changes set forth in the document titled Proposed Amendments to Ordinance Number Forty-eight Eighty-Two for the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, Bree and Jennifer, I'm going to go back to the original motion because the way that this was written, so, okay, thank you. So counselors, you have a motion to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number forty-eight eighty-two as amended. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Ravencroft?
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance forty-eight eighty-two as amended, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, repealing chapter thirty-six, article four of the Lewiston City Code, enacting a new article four to chapter thirty-six of the Lewiston City Code, which article establishes a system of stormwater drainage system user fees to fund a provision of proprietary stormwater services by the city to property owners within the city's jurisdiction. Approves administration of the user fee system, authorizes stormwater user fees and establishes a process for property owners to appeal the amount of the fee, requires that stormwater user fee revenue be kept separate from the general fund and spent only on stormwater drainage system costs, and establishes enforcement provisions and penalties for non-payment of fees, amending various sections of, sections of chapter thirty-six point five of the Lewiston City Code related to city services billing and collection of utility charges, repealing all ordinances and parts of the ordinances in conflict herewith, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Clerk Ravencroft, did you capture the amended motion?
The amendment was to reflect the changes set forth in the document titled Proposed Amendments to Ordinance Number Forty-eight Eighty-Two for the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. So the amendments are contained within that document. And then the motion was to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number forty-eight eighty-two as amended by that document.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselors, next up, we have ordinance forty-eight eighty-six, amending section thirty dash eleven F of the city code to allow type-three temporary signs to be located within the central business district on privately-owned utility poles and to provide a minimum height clearance. This is an action item. You've had this before you, counselors?
Mayor, a motion?
Counselor Forsman?
Motion to combine the second and third reading and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-eight eighty-six. Second?
Been moved by Counselor Forsman, seconded by Counselor Schroeder to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-eight eighty-six. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Forsman?
Motion to approve the second and third reading of ordinance number forty, excuse me, forty-eight forty-six.
Forty-eight eighty-six?
Forty-eight eighty-six. Is that wrong?
Four eight eight six.
Four eight eight six, excuse me. Second?
Been moved by Counselor Forsman, seconded by Counselor Littke to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number forty-eight eighty-six. Is there discussion or amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Ravencroft?
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance four eight eight six, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending section thirty dash eleven F of the Lewiston City Code to allow type-three temporary signs to be located within the central business district on privately-owned utility poles and to provide a minimum height clearance and providing an effective date.
Next up, counselors, item D, ordinance forty-eight eighty-nine, amending section thirty-one dash two of the Lewiston City Code to add a definition for parklet, enacting section thirty-one dash seventy-seven regarding parklets, including the location where parklets are allowed and, and associated procedure. This is an action item. You have had this before you.
Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
Motion to combine the second and third reading and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-eight eighty-nine. Second?
Been moved by Counselor Forsman, seconded by Counselor Schroeder to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-eight eighty-nine. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Forsman?
Motion to approve the second and third reading of ordinance number forty-eight eighty-nine. Second?
Been moved by Counselor Forsman, seconded by Counselor Schroeder to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number forty-eight eighty-nine. Is there discussion or amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Ravencroft?
Approving the second and third readings of ordinance forty-eight eighty-nine, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, amending section thirty-one dash two of the Lewiston City Code to add a definition for parklet, enacting section thirty-one dash seventy-seven regarding parklets, including location where parklets are allowed and associated procedure and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Luke, for being here tonight, too. Appreciate that. Counselors, next up, yeah, let me make sure I say this correctly. We're under ordinances three. Subsection three, adoption approval, approval of ordinance summaries. We have ordinance forty-eight eighty-four, ordinance forty-eight eighty-two, ordinance forty-eight eighty-six, and ordinance forty-eight eighty-nine.
Mayor, a motion?
Counselor Forsman?
Motion to adopt ordinance number forty-eight eighty-four, forty-eight eighty-two, forty-eight eighty-six, and forty-eight eighty-nine, and approve the related ordinance summaries. Second?
Been moved by Counselor Forsman, seconded by Counselor Schroeder to adopt ordinance numbers forty-eight eighty-four, forty-eight eighty-two, forty-eight eighty-six, and forty-eight eighty-nine, and approve the related ordinance summaries. Is there discussion? Clerk Ravencroft?
Council President Littke?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Carries. Thank you, counselors. Next up, we have section eight, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, parket design standards. This is an action item. Counselor Schroeder?
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine.
Your job's easy today. Second?
Been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forsman to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine. Is there discussion? Counselor Littke?
I have a couple of questions. One concern, page three, section two, curb interface. I've read that sentence over and over again and I'm still like, what am I missing? The design shall be stamped by a professional engineer licensed in Idaho and accommodate the city of Lewiston design storm. I, I, what's a design storm?
Mayor, Counselor Littke, moving into the city engineer, the design storm is defined in another ordinance currently, eighty-one hundred. And I thought I should probably define it within this document, which is why it has the comment there. But I did not take the time to look that up and make sure that we defined it in this document for this reading. That's probably one of those, one of those repairs that you'll see coming down the road.
And then my only other concern is, again, I, I try to avoid subjective language. I, I'm not opposed to permissive language, but on page four, under heating, letter A, outdoor heaters and elements that use gas or propane may be allowed in parklets with approval of the city of Lewiston. For me, I feel like it'd be a little clearer, more clear if we did, you know, outdoor heaters and elements that use gas or propane that meet whatever governing body that allows for propane and gas will be, or some sort of criteria written in that so that it's not subjective to city staff to say, you know, this brand or this brand or, like, can we define that for the users?
I'm confident that we can. I couldn't tell you what that is off the top of my head, but yeah.
Those were my just comments as we move forward. Otherwise, I think it's, you did a great job, Luke.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let him finish writing.
Thank you, Counselor.
So Luke, in here, a couple of things that was mentioned before about the, it says here, permit holders shall get a professional engineer license to evaluate here, permit holders shall get a professional engineer license to evaluate, make written recommendations. So after one is established, wouldn't they be able to reuse that? Like, if one design is approved? What I'm saying is, does every permit holder have to hire a, start the process all over again?
With the way this is written, I would say yes.
Is it necessary?
I'm going to try not to answer that philosophically. Each parklet will have its own set of constraints and its own set of considerations based on the location it is planned for on the street. So whether it's on a street corner, or whether it's in the middle of a curve, or whether it's in the diagonal parking versus the parallel parking, each of those things are going to have a different layer to how we should be treated. And so I don't want to be the one to make the decision on whether each situation is safe based on one design.
Good answer. Thanks.
Good question. Thank you, counselor. No further discussion.
Council President Littkey?
Aye.
Counselor Forssman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, counselors. Next up, we have Item I, Reason Statement ZNC twenty-three zero-zero-zero-zero-three. Considering Approval of the Reason Statement for ZNC twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-zero-three. This is an action item. Had this previous to you.
Motion to approve the Reason Statement for ZNC twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-zero-three.
Moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Littkey, to approve the Reason Statement for ZNC twenty-three zero-zero-zero-zero-three. Is there discussion? Your amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Counselors, next, we jump to Rumor number oh-nine, Unfinished and New Business. City Councilor comments? Counselor Forssman?
I saw a citizen on my way here. I was not able to stop and ask their name, but they were cleaning up the sidewalk from all the dirt and debris and everything that happened with the rain. They're probably not listening, but I commend them for doing that, and it was hot out, and I could tell they were working hard, and I wish I had time to get that person's name because that just shows that the community can come together, and obviously that person didn't have to do that, so appreciate that.
Counselors, Item nine B, City Board and Commission Updates. Are there any today? Counselor Littkey?
I would just say that I attended the Disability Advisory Commission, and there was a great conversation happening in regards to support of, obviously, ADA improvements, and Director Johnson presented to the group. I will say that I do encourage people to attend those meetings, to ask questions, just because it is community members that bring different information to the table. It leads to further conversations and other ways the community can get involved, especially if you have somebody with disabilities, like Mr. Peterson, on the commission, and then as well as those people that are, you know, doing the day-to-day service. I think that we will be hearing from them soon with some information that we should take into great consideration. I was impressed with the conversation.
Fair enough, counselor. Counselor Schroeder?
Well, I don't have much to add to the Valley Board of Liaison because they brought it all to council today, and so I applaud them for doing that, and I think they did a great job. So that was my update for the liaison for Valley Vision.
Counselors, Counselor Forssman?
The Public Works Advisory, or, yeah, advisory, I'm a liaison as well as Counselor Schroeder, and I think it's going well. There's a lot that I'm learning, and we're able to dive into it a lot more. Dustin's putting a lot of work into that and working with us and providing assistance, and as well as people that have chosen to sign up for that, and they're bringing a lot to the table, as well as knowledge, smarts. And so it's really good just to be able to have discussions and learn from each other and come up with hopefully solid solutions and clarity for those in the public to know and make Public Works a little more exciting.
And I missed the last meeting.
Okay, mayor comments. I'd like to just share with council, and I think you're aware of this, but staff has been, I think, very good at showing their appreciation to the governor's office for all the support that we've been getting from the Department of Environmental Quality. And we have had some, I think, some good successes with them this year, and this loan that we're getting is just another example of that. And staff in the past have written letters to the BEQ staff through the governor's office, thanking them for their work. So we just need to remember our partners at the state that are, you know, trying to help us and work with us. And I know that in May, when I had the opportunity to go visit with the governor in Boise, I handed him just a sheet of paper that Public Works put together that we can just show him how they've helped us in the past, but we continue to need them as a partner as we move through the current situation that we're in with the reservoir, but now this storm event that we've had. But I just really appreciate the governor's office and the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality for their support of Lewiston. And then I would like to say thank you to Director Barker. They did a little show over at Rotary Park the other day, and it looks really good, Director, and I think the Rotary Club did a wonderful job of fixing that up, and it's going to be a great community asset. So thank you for your partnership with them into making that space a little bit more friendly, I think, and inviting, so. Item D, Advisory Board and Commission Appointments. D-one, Code Board of Appeals, considering the appointment of Eric Peterson to a three-year term. This is an action item, and I move to approve the appointment of Eric Peterson to the Code Board of Appeals.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Schroeder, to approve the appointment of Eric Peterson to the Code Board of Appeals. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Next up, Historic Preservation Commission, considering removal of Peggy Heisingfeld, is that close, from the Historic Preservation Commission, of course, with Lewiston City Code, Section two dash forty-five, the reason being absenteeism. So I move to remove Peggy Heisingfeld from the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Schroeder, to remove Peggy Heisingfeld from the Historic Preservation Commission. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Counselors, we're now at Agenda Topics.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Littkey?
I would move that we bring forward the Valley Vision contract for consideration to the next regular city council meeting.
Second.
Counselor Forssman, I'm going to restate the motion just to make sure we all heard it carefully, and Clerk Ravengroft heard it, and our legal team over there. But as I understand it, Counselor Littkey is making a motion to have a contract with Valley Vision on the next agenda. B, the date would be the twenty-sixth? Yeah, on June twenty-sixth. Counselor Littkey, is that fine?
That would be just fine.
The way I restated it. Counselor Forssman, you in agreement? Okay. Is there discussion? Motion? Okay, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. I bring this to Rumor number ten. Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Yep, I had one. Following our transportation presentation we had here a week or so ago, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to provide the funding options for the Brighton Avenue projects during a workshop and maybe come up with an action plan.
Okay, I will try to restate that. As I understand it, there's a motion to, for staff, to direct staff to put together funding options for Brighton Avenue and present that to council at a future work session?
Yeah, if possible, one prior to August. So it's something I think we need to talk about before we go into our budget.
My understanding is that we will not have a July work session. Did we settle that, Clerk Ravengroft?
That was moved to the following Monday, July tenth, I believe.
Thank you. So Counselor Spicklemeyer, if you want to be specific, July tenth would be the next work session. Okay? Counsel understand the motion, then? Discussion? Further discussion? Counselor Littkey, is that a?
We're talking the whole Brighton quarter? Okay.
Okay, those in favor of adding that to the July tenth work session, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries, thank you.
Mayor?
Counselor Forssman?
We have a citizen in the crowd raised their hand a lot. I don't know if you wanted to respond to that, or?
I can't hear you, counsel.
He raised his hand a lot for, I guess, asking a question. I don't know if that's something we can just address after the meeting is over, or we can explain that to him properly for that.
We will certainly extend the courtesy to Counselor Kluß. Counselor Kluß, would you like to share some words with us?
Thank you. I, you know, I know this isn't the normal routine, and I won't keep you. I am...
Just introduce yourself for the record.
Jim Plus Five Twenty Twenty-first Avenue. And I still like it from the old days when everybody actually had to give their address because I know many people who've approached this podium and said, Lewiston, Idaho, and they live in Waha or Clarkston or Palmeroy. I'd like to go back to that. Anyway, I'll leave it alone, but my comment tonight, other than the tons of comments I have, is your website. And the website no longer allows you to view streaming-wise this meeting, and it hasn't for the last handful of meetings. And I sat here tonight looking at that, went on it, and it used to be you'd go to How Do I? And when you brought up How Do I, it would bring up, one of the things it would bring up is view a live meeting. View a live meeting is no longer a line item on your website. Now, I'm not that sharp, but my wife is sharp. So I said, Carolyn, can you do this tonight before I came down here? And she couldn't do it. And I've asked one or two other people who occasionally would watch these meetings, and they can't do it either. Now, the last time I was able to view a meeting, six or eight, ten weeks ago, I can't tell you, but in the census spring, we were at home, and there was some little icon, we were watching the meeting, and some icon came on, and I didn't really see it, but Carolyn goes, well, it shows five people watching the meeting about a half hour in. And towards the end of the meeting, there were fifteen. So I understand I'm in a small group of ten to fifteen nerds who watch the meeting occasionally, but I'm telling you, it doesn't work. I haven't been able to get it, my wife hasn't been able to get it, maybe there's something wrong with our internet, but people in other parts of town have told me they have not been able to get it. I'm not the only, but I'm the only one bringing it up as a subject. So, you know, I do kind of enjoy watching some of these, and...
Well, we appreciate that, Counselor Kluß.
You know, I have that comment, so. I've got lots more, but I'll leave it alone then.
Okay, I'll comment again, but Director Bro, I think, is going to help us here. Thank you.
So IT has heard Counselor Kluß's comments, and what they're trying to show is, on the screen here, is that there is a link there for live and recorded meetings, and it goes to YouTube now, so we had to switch over to a different platform. And then also from the main page, if you want to go back there, that little red arrow is where you can get to that page.
Wow, it's not easy for the average person to navigate.
Yeah, it's a little bit different than before.
This is not a citizen-friendly site.
Mayor?
Counselor Forssman?
Sorry, can we just describe real quick why we had to do that? Did you know that? You don't know that? As far as I was told, it was due to the old way we had it, there was a lot of technical issues, and that's why we kept having meetings that would stop intermittently or not record while. So this was a way to try to make sure that we're not having those interruptions anymore. Not, I know that technically...
For the average, average techni- techno citizen, knowledgeable person, it is, this is, it's an unfriendly site.
Work in progress.
It's not bad at all. You know, it ought to be easy to watch these. It's not. And to me, that's a priority.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Good comments. Counselor Littkey?
I want to go home, but I have to agree with Counselor Kluß that I look at this, it needs to be ADA compliant, and so I do a regular test through my day job, and it is very hard to determine where people go throughout the site. If you're on websites a lot, you might be able to navigate, and again, you know, you can play around until you find it, but I understand the frustration, and so I think that's a conversation we can continue to have, and I think IT is more than willing to look at what we can do, so.
Counselor, question?
One other comment. Our irrigation issue. Also, when you go on the website tonight, I mean, sitting here, it's the same message from April. I mean, I don't know how we're doing, you know, are we doing, as a downtown community, are we doing a pretty good job? How's it going? Are we saving enough water? When I go on the site, it is the message from April twenty-third that talks about whatever. I think, well, man, we're way beyond April twenty-third. What's going on? Are there updates? Are we conserving enough water? I mean, what are we doing? And I just, I'm disappointed because people, you know, I think people are really trying to do their part by and large, but we ought to be able to get updates. Hey, you're doing pretty good, or you're not doing good, or the last three or four days we did good, now we're not doing. But when I see an April twenty-third message, I think, my God, is that the best we can do? And maybe there's some place you go if you have five hours to manade around the world with the internet to find us, but this ought to be easy, and it is not.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Forssman?
Sorry, one last thing. Will you mind, because I know you had a lot of others, and we're wrapping up tonight, but will you please send those through email, or any of the other concerns you have, so that way we have them? No, you just said you had some other ones, so I just didn't know if you wanted to.
He does. He has a ton of them.
Okay. All right. If you don't feel like you need to address them.
We can do that.
Okay. If you don't feel like you need to address them now, then that's fine. Thank you.
We'll take a look at that. Thank you, counselor. Much appreciated, and you're not alone. I know that.
Hey, once, I appreciate you. You know, you're all, you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Littkey wants to go home.
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Littkey, seconded by Counselor Forssman, to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you.
You.